What's your pink bracelet?
I got my, I got my pink on my, I'd already had my stuff out when I got the memo, but I found this tie with pink on it.
There you go.
And I got my pink ribbon on which-
Well, I've gotten something in the email the other day about, about pink and so I went ahead and then I thought, you know-
I hate it when somebody sits in my chair and changes the seat.
Then Jean would get upset.
Oh, I know, I saw that.
Yeah.
How nice. Look at that, did you see it has our little initials on it?
Yeah.
Oh, these are cute too.
There he is.
Good morning.
I thought it was, uh, a man in black. You gonna say, you gonna do any Johnny Cash this morning?
Ah, fell into burning fire. I've been in that burning fire.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, man in black.
Where's Billy?
Thank you.
You ever seen him?
Yeah?
Little guy?
I seem like a frog.
Not a yellow leg frog, eh? Or is it more like, you said be told?
Bullfrog.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, we need to get that clock fixed. It makes you all think we're starting late, but I go by satellite time as usual, and it is now ten o'clock. So, um, if everyone would please stand with me and salute the flag of this great country. We're gonna be led by Supervisor Ashida, and this will be followed by a moment of silence.
Benny Salud.
My pleasure. The religion is to the flag, let me say, America, and to the republic from which it stands, my nation, a man, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, the first item we're going to be, uh, taking up today is to present a proclamation to Target Stores for award of the $2,000 grant to the Visalia Healthcare Center located at 2611 North Dinuba Boulevard. Um, so we're going to take that item up, and I'm not gonna read the rest of it, so we'll, uh, go ahead. Monique, are you gonna go ahead and say something? Please do so.
Chairman, Supervisors, thank you for speaking with us this morning. Today, we'd like to say once again, thank you to our target partner for their generous early literacy reading grant award, which allows us to continue distributing books throughout the county clinics. As you know, we value our quality of life initiatives, and we have been successful since 2003 in our Reach Out and Read program. Armored Jean, thank you.
All right, are you ready? So, we, please, if you would please join me in the well, I'll present this proclamation to you both. All right, uh, so I'm presenting this proclamation to you, recognizing Target Stores' continued support in improving literacy efforts. Whereas, the Reach Out and Read program is administered in the Tulare County Health Centers, and the program trains primary care providers how to advise parents about the importance of reading aloud to children. And whereas, every child between six months and five years that visits a clinic for a well-child exam will receive a children's book to take home and keep. And whereas, every child who regularly participates in the program that will start school with a library, uh, of books at their home, and that can reach at least ten. Whereas, Re- Reach Out and Read is a proven early literacy program. And whereas, Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency has supported literacy improvement programs in the past. And whereas, the original funding for this program has expired, and Target Stores share in the commitment to improve literacy. And whereas, Visalia, uh, Target Visalia North Stores number 2469, uh, has made a $2,000 contribution for the Reach Out and Read program administered through the Tulare County Health and Human Services Visalia Healthcare Center. The funding will be used to purchase books for students to use throughout the county. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors continues its support for literacy and recognizes and commends the contribution of Target Stores for their community's support. That's dated October 8, 2013, and signed by Supervisors Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. And thank you so much for your commitment to reading. Uh, I think it's fantastic that Target gets involved in the community and supports a much-needed cause. Um, I, I appreciate the invitations that we receive in all the communities we serve to come in and read aloud to children at times. I've been a part of several of those in Tulare, hopefully Visalia does the same thing. Um, but, uh, your supporting, uh, childhood literacy is so important and a very valuable asset in our community, and we thank you. Agreed. Ed, you wanna get rid of that box so you can actually get down to my house? Thank you.
Yep.
All right, this is an action item, so at this time, the Chair will entertain a motion for this approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Ashida, please vote. Motion passes four to zero, uh, with Supervisor Cox not voting because he is not present at this meeting. Um, we will now move on to item number two, which is public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Supervisors under public comment? If so, please step forward and, uh, say your name and address for the record.
Uh, Clark Kent, Terrabella, California. And, uh, I'm, uh, here to, uh, question the board with regard to the petition that I submitted, uh, last week in regards to the deficiency of the Brit, of the crossing of Deer Creek at, at Road 224. I was just wondering if you'd, uh, had anything to, uh, say to, to that petition, and if so, what is it?
Um, well, thank you, typically, we don't respond to public comment during the meeting, and it's, uh, we can address this item separately, but- You do, you do have Britt Fussell, uh, available here, uh, that you can speak with, um, and we did pass on the, uh, petition to the appropriate individuals, and Britt can go ahead and speak to it.
I just wanted to, uh, to recognize the form, 'cause the people are losing here in this country, and I'm very sad about that.
No, I appreciate you coming forward, and Britt, Britt, do you wanna speak to that real quick, or do you wanna meet with-
Yeah, Supervisor Britt Fussell, Assistant Director for Public Works, and we did receive the petition in our office, and staff is preparing an agenda item to come back to you with a report, and we're probably looking at your first meeting in November to do that, to give us just time to follow the normal procedure to get through the system.
Okay, well, Mr. Kent's already left, so hopefully he, uh, will hear that by listening to the, uh, airing of this meeting, and hopefully that matters to him.
Ray Christman is-
Uh, Mr. Christman, I'm sorry.
Is the name of the individual that was at the microphone.
Oh, yeah, I, I knew Superman didn't ring a bell as a, uh, individual here in Tulare County.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, we'll be back on, uh, I think it's November 5th, it's the first meeting in November with a report on that project.
Okay, thank you, Britt, sure appreciate it. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak under public comment this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public comment period, and I will bring it to the Board for Board of Supervisors Matters. Today, we are going to start with Supervisor Ashida.
Last night, we had our monthly Three Rivers, uh, Town Hall meeting, and the main topic up there was the closure of the park. And that has caused extreme financial hardship on the people who operate in Three Rivers, and including Wasatchia Lodge, which I received a letter from. This has happened all throughout the United States, there's over 400 national parks, and they've been closed, so all that fall business has been turned away. So, they asked us to initially to, to write a letter, uh, asking for a state of emergency, but under the, uh, laws of the state of California, the, this does not apply, the closure of the park does not apply. So, in essence, they're asking the Board to write a letter to our senators, and the President, and Harry Reid, asking to pass the bill that the, the, the House has, uh, forwarded to the Senate to fund the, the national parks, and also our national forests. Uh, this is the time of the year a lot of people use the national forest also. The saving grace of the national forest is there's no gate, so they really can't keep you out of the national forest. Last, uh, Saturday, I spoke briefly at the Republican State, uh, Convention, and as of now, I think the Republicans do not have a candidate for governor. I, I also believe that you've been reading about the Republican Party, there's a divide within the, within the House and the National Party, while that divide is very evident in the state of California. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much, we are now going to move on to Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last Tuesday, after the meeting we had, uh, in Visalia, we adjourned to, uh, State Home Demonstration Forest in, uh, up in our mountains, and also, we went to, uh, the State, uh, County Park, Volsh Park. Um, you know, I, I think we need to continually draw attention to Volsh Park. We're the only county in the nation that has a park of the grandeur and beauty of Volsh Park with its magnificent stand of giant sequoias, and I'm, I'm afraid that very few people of Tulare County even know that it exists. It's not the easiest place to get to, but believe me, it's worth the effort to, to get there. Uh, also, we took a tremendous tour of the demonstration forest, and a, a well-managed forest that, um, is the, what I refer to as the anecdote, if you will, or the way of dealing with the problems that we've seen evident throughout this here in Nevada. Uh, recently demonstrated in the rim fire outside of, inside of the, uh, the national forest in Stanislaw, and also the national park in, in that area. So, it, it, it shows what can be done to manage a forest, to produce, uh, timber, to increase wildlife, to improve, uh, water flows, and to improve the health of the forest. And, uh, so we're hoping to have the forester that is stationed there to come down and make a presentation at our board meeting, because we really want, we were hoping we'd have more press there, uh, because this is something we need to get out to, um, the alternative that we are now facing, which is a, a lack of management on national forest, uh, properties, and, and BLM, and also national parks. Uh, yesterday was the grand opening for the new courthouse in Porterville. I don't wanna steal Mike's thunder, it's in his district, but it's a beautiful facility, uh, and I certainly encourage you, if you have the opportunity to go and see it, uh, to do so. Uh, also, uh, the CIO and myself, uh, did some touring of the old courthouse, uh, actually, my first time being there, it's very interesting, there's a crack in the wall, you can see the daylight on the outside. And then we went over and checked out some facilities that we are looking to use temporarily for staffing our District Attorney, Public Defender's Office, and so, that's what I have to report, thank you.
All right, well, I can tell you why there wasn't more media up at Mountain Home State Forest, they were all pulled over on the side of the road, uh, 'cause they took Yocle Drive, and they were throwing up, uh, because it's such a narrow windy road to, uh, get up to a Mountain Home Park. All right, with that, we'll move on now to, uh, the finest of all Michael T. Ennis's in Tulare County, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I also attended that Mountain Home, uh, uh, meeting after the board meeting last year, and it's, it's just a breath of fresh air to see a forest managed. You know, they go in there, I, I don't know whether, uh, any of you have been to our national forest lately, but the white thorn has taken over, and I don't know what you know what white thorn is, but it takes over, it gets four or five feet high, you can't go through it. They went into this area, they bought, they, they logged 5,000 acres, they logged 3.4 million board feet of lumber out of there a year. Now, that's just 5,000 acres, and it's, it's pristine, it's beautiful, they got all kinds of wildlife. They go in with an eradicator, chew up all the white thorn, knock all the dead limbs off the trees, so when we do get a lightning strike on the floor, it stays there. You don't burn your trees up, you don't burn your forest up. So, I also hope we get some publicity out of this, and maybe some pictures taken of the way a forest needs to be managed. Uh, it's conducive to wildlife, you find in these areas, all the wildlife migrates to these areas, because there's room for them, there's feed for them, there's things they can, they, you know, this, they love the area, 'cause it's open, you can see it. The old saying, you can't see the forest for the trees, that's the way the national forest is right now. Also, uh, we did have the Justice Center, uh, opening, not opening, but, uh, tour yesterday, what a magnificent building. Uh, it's hard to believe that it's sitting in Porterville.
You said it, not me.
That's right, and it is hard to believe that this beautiful magnificent building is in Porterville, and it is beautiful, and it's very, very functional, that's, uh, I tell people, and of course, the judges, uh, kinda made comment on it yesterday. When you go down to the old courthouse, and you go in for jury duty, they've got these little old skinny hallways and stuff, and everybody's trapped and in there, and you're sitting across from the defendant, from the, uh, the witnesses, from the prosecution, uh, everybody's right there together. The guy in the orange jumpsuit, they're all, and, and of course, I can remember the days when they handcuffed him to the chain link fence outside because they didn't have room for him inside. So, what a great facility, this courthouse is gonna have its own receiving area for the prisoners, uh, you won't see those people until they come into the courtroom, which is great. Uh, it's very, very people-friendly, it's got the windows outside, you don't have to go in, go through security to, to do your business with the clerks, you just walk up on the outside, take a number, they get to you, and then you can leave, so I mean-
When the funding's available.
What a great, what a great, uh, it's like 31 flavors used to be, uh, but what a great, uh, what a great facility, and I'm very proud to see it open in Porterville. Saturday night, we had the big Sierra View District Hospital, uh, Gala, which was Dancing with the Stars, which was, uh, quite a, quite a interesting event. I mean, to, to watch these people get out there and perform, we had five different couples, and, uh, uh, it takes a lot of, a lot of nerve to get out there.
That's cool.
And, uh, and it takes a lot of skill too, but, uh, and then, of course, they were all asking me, now, you're gonna do this next year, aren't you? And I said, look, I do good to walk and chew gum at the same time, I don't think so, but anyway. Uh, lots of people there from the area, uh, Under Sheriff Boudreaux was there, and Captain Skiles, and we had a whole bunch of people there from, uh, Tulare County, representing Tulare County, what a great event. Uh, also, uh, we'll be having a Workforce Investment Board meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 at, uh, the Holiday Inn, and so looking forward to that, that's a board that I do serve on. On Monday morning, uh, this coming Monday morning, I'll be, uh, attending the Lower Tulie, uh, Improvement GPA Meeting, which I chair, uh, and hopefully gonna be finding out more about Success Dam and its future. Uh, we're hoping for a, at least a DSAC III, so that hopefully we can fill it to capacity this year, it's gonna be a wet year, from everybody I'm talking to, and looking at the almanac, uh, it's, it's saying maybe 16 inches of rain. So, uh, we're hoping that we get that, uh, dam where we can use it, and if we get, uh, moisture up and down the valley, we'll be able to use our Friant Dam water and hold our success water till later on in the year. So, that's one thing that I, that we're really looking forward to. So, we'll also be having a Water Commission meeting that Monday afternoon, uh, which I also sat on, uh, with Supervisor Ashida, so, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for that passionate blast to the past, Supervisor Ennis, we sure appreciate it. Supervisor Ashida wants another bite at the apple, go for it.
Yeah, I forgot a couple things. Uh, last week, I attended a meeting of the Sequoia, uh, Yosemite Sequoia RC&amp;D, and the topic came up of the rim fire, and the salvage operation that's gonna need to take place in the, uh, in that area. And because we have the only mill within 200 miles, and most of the mills have been shut down in the state of California, we have a four-year supply of salvage, salvageable logs, and as a result of that fire, but we do not have the capacity to salvage those logs within the two years that it's required because of the quality of the lumber. So, not only do we have issues with the forest needing to be logged and thinned, is that there just isn't the capacity. So, I would s- say that probably in the near future, we're gonna see some of these mills start back up. Uh, I think that's the tendency of the feelings that I got from the meeting. The other thing I forgot was, uh, tonight, we have our first Step Up Event in, in Woodville, so we're looking forward to that event tonight, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, just wanted to go over a couple of items today. Uh, first of all, uh, today is Pink Tuesday, hence, uh, all these balloons, it's not, uh, Mike's birthday. Um, all these balloons are for Pink Tuesday, uh, in Tulare County, and, uh, appreciate all the county employees that are wearing pink to, uh, support the cause for breast cancer awareness. Um, I also wanted to, uh, go over, uh, real quick, the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, uh, 2013 mammography screening, uh, that's taking place. Uh, it's free, uh, to all county employees, and no out-of-pocket expenses, um, that are currently enrolled through the, uh, San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. Um, this is a great proactive effort to hopefully, uh, detect early so that we can, uh, not have any, uh, real severe cases be caught when it's too late. So, I really appreciate this, and if you are, uh, interested, please, uh, contact HR about signing up for, uh, the free mammography screenings for county employees. Also, wanted to, uh, go over, uh, this week on Thursday, thank you to, uh, Pacific Gas and Electric, uh, the Waukina School, um, as well as various county organizations, uh, ranging from the Sheriff's Department to the Health and Human Services Agency, and thank you to you for participating. Um, they're going to be putting on a resource fair and some energy, uh, enhancements and improvements, weatherizing of buildings, uh, in the community of Waukina. I think it's a great outreach effort, uh, and a great way to get, uh, the message out to a community that's often overlooked, um, so I'm really excited about that event that will be taking place this Thursday at 6:00 PM. Um, lastly, uh, there is going to be, um, a weekend of celebration, uh, celebrating and honoring, uh, the Curdie family in Tulare for 100 years in operation as Curdie Family Farms. Um, they've, uh, in their various capacities, been in business for over 100 years here in Tulare County, um, actually started out in the Waukina area. Uh, they will be honored this weekend, and, uh, really congratulate them, uh, for all that they do for the community and for their existence over 100 years. Um, with that, that concludes Board of Supervisors Matters. Um, we will now take up the consent calendar, we are going to remove items 13 and 15 for separate comment. Um, an addendum, item number four, addendum will also be considered under this, uh, motion, less items that have been suggested to be removed. Is there anyone from the public that would like to remove any consent calendar item for comment? Any, uh, board member wish to, uh, pull any additional items? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion at this time for the balance of consent.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes four to zero with Supervisor Cox not in attendance at today's meeting and not voting. Um, we will now take up items number 13, uh, and 15 off of the regularly scheduled agenda.
Good morning, Board, Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. Um, the item before you this morning is a funding agreement with the, um, California State Department of Public Health, and also an amendment to an existing funding agreement we have with the Seville-Yetum, uh, project. I would also like to recognize in your chambers this morning is Chris Kaphein with the Alta Irrigation District. Mr. Kaphein has been intimately involved in this regional surface water treatment plant project for several years, and there may be some questions that you have that I can't answer, that I'm sure he would be able to do that. Um, the, the two items go hand in hand, I'm gonna talk briefly about 15 first. It's a funding agreement with the state to do a feasibility study to determine the feasibility of bringing in surface water into northern Tulare County, treat that water, and to distribute it to, um, the various communities in north Tulare County, Cutler, Arosi, East Arosi, the communities of Sultana, Monson, Seville, and, and Yetum. Um, all of those communities were party to a memorandum of understanding a year or so ago, Tulare County representing the, um, county communities and the public utility districts and CSDs representing Cutler-Arosi and East Arosi, et cetera. Um, unfortunately, the state was not able to fund that project as it was originally submitted. Um, again, unfortunately, with the state, in order to get money to try to be proactive and deal with, you know, issues that are out there, you actually have to have a problem. And at that point in time that the application was submitted, there was no water quality problem, but because we had the project going on in Seville and Yetum to deal with the distribution system, that then became the water problem, if you will, for CDPH, that they could actually enter into this funding agreement with Tulare County to, um, do this feasibility study for this regional surface water plant. In order to get that, and, and, and that, that study has to coincide with the delivery of the Seville-Yetum project that we already had under agreement, um, because we're actually leveraging that agreement, so we really only have until May of 2014 to complete this project. In order to rapidly deliver it and to recognize the resources that have already been spent on that project, um, through the, uh, Arosi Public Utility District and their contract engineering resources with Keller Wegley, the item 13 is an agreement with the Arosi Public Utility District, um, to deliver the project, and then they will be using Keller Wegley engineers as their contract engineering consultants to actually do the work. And it is through that fashion, we are able to expeditiously do this project and get it done by, um, uh, end of May of, of 2014. And so, um, again, the action today is, um, is basically three agreements. One is the funding agreement for the regional surface water project, it's, um, SRF-funded, State Revolving Fund, an amendment to the existing Yetum-Seville project that's already underway, and item number 13, which is an agreement with the Arosi Public Utility District to deliver the project. And with that, I will, uh, respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions or comments from Board members? Okay, any, uh, further comments or questions from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, uh, the Chair will entertain an action, I, the reason we pulled this item was just because I think it's a really good news story where Tulare County can step in and be involved in a project to help improve, uh, water quality and availability to residents throughout the county. So, I think it's really important that we pulled this, and that we are taking this step and making this action, and look forward to partnering to better the water service in these communities.
And Chairman, if I could also add to that, I didn't comment on, uh, we are also in the process, and we'll be back to your Board probably by early November, to apply for a grant to study the governance issues of this regional surface water project. And the intent there is to study the form of governance as necessary, so that the county doesn't itself become the governance of the project. As, as we have discussed in our other projects, the Monson Project that you approved last week, the Seville-Yetum Project, all include a governance piece, so we can find another form of governance to, uh, run these systems once they're put in place.
Okay, that's great, uh, again, is there any comment, I'm reading, did you wanna speak? You can use either microphone, they both work.
Good morning, Board members, um, I just wanna take a few minutes to thank the county-
Just state your name real quick.
Maria Herrera with Community Water Center, I just wanna take a few minutes to thank, thank the county for their leadership role in these projects, and also, um, thank personally Britt Fussell. I know he's spent significant amount of hours working on various projects for the northern Tulare County area. I also do wanna recognize that just how involved the local community residents have been in that area. I personally have spent many night meetings, um, in that, in the district, working to try to, you know, breach agreement between communities about just how, about, just how we can work together, um, to work on this project, and how we're gonna address issues like governance. And so, um, we hope that the county will continue to have open conversations with our organization and the community, so that we can ultimately be able to deliver safe drinking water projects that are driven from the community, thank you.
Yes, uh, my name's Chris Kaphein, I'm the General Manager of Alta Irrigation District, and I too would like to thank Tulare County and all the communities and the people that have been involved in this. Britt's done an admirable job in, in working through all the bureaucratic hurdles that, uh, we've had to go through on this. But I think there's one thing to consider, you know, you have short-term issues that pop up, well goes out, things happen. I, I think the uniqueness of this project is that this is a regional project to look at in addressing multiple issues at one time. Uh, it's much more cost-effective, uh, and, and we as people that are involved in public policy, it's, uh, I think it's our obligation to try to make things work in the most cost-effective manner and solve multiple problems at one time. We know we have a lot of drinking water issues, and hopefully, this is a good template for moving future, uh, forward in the future, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, but I did wanna make just a couple of comments. Uh, one of the things that I was at the meeting that we had last week at the supervisor, or the Alta Irrigation District's office, and I can't stress enough the importance of the governance issue here, uh, for the people who live in these communities. All things being equal, if everything stayed the same as it is right now, and this regional project came online, it would mean an additional cost back to the people to get this clean drinking water, because to- Because to provide this water, it's not free. The Alta Irrigation has available water to use, but this is going to be not only an expensive project from a construction standpoint, but there will be obviously the operational cost, the maintenance cost of this facility to provide and augment an existing water supply. That's an additional cost. So, we know we have people who are paying some of the highest rates for water rates in Tulare County now in these, in these unincorporated communities. The solution is going to be in the governance piece, where we can eliminate a lot of the duplications of efforts that are now undertaken by each one of these different individual entities, the CSDs and so forth, and the county as well, to reduce our operational costs, to bring the cost of water down to the people that is at a level that they can afford, so we can provide good drinking water at affordable prices. And so, I just want to say that the governance piece of this thing is really going to be critical as we go forward. And that was my motion.
Chairman, I second that motion. I also have a comment. This is an example that we've been working with in the Water Commission, you know, water issues, that we are actively engaged with the community organizers in these communities to make things happen. And with the, with the political clout that some of these organizations have in Sacramento to change some of the laws that have prevented us to move forward has been very successful. And we may not always agree on certain items, policy items, but on providing water to our disadvantaged communities, I think all the, the community activists and ourselves, and even some of the CRLA are, we're all working together to better the lives of the people in Tulare County. And I second the motion.
All right, so, I asked you guys if you wanted to have any discussion, and everyone said no, and now we've had a really long discussion, and a very long motion, and the longest second I've ever heard in my life. Chair will take up the vote now. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero with Supervisor Cox not voting because he is not present at today's meeting.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. The next item that we are going to consider is addendum item number four, which is an item from the Health and Human Services Agency. Jason?
Jason Britt, Director of Public Health. Morning, Chairman, Supervisors. This is a grant renewal for the Nutrition, Education, and Obesity Prevention Program. The mission of NEOP is to encourage residents of Tulare County to increase fruit and vegetable consumption, increase their physical activity, and food security with the goal of, of course, preventing obesity and other chronic diseases. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I know Gene had a question about this. Gene, do you want to ask? I know we were just talking about the plan. We wanted to pull this item for separate consideration to see if anyone had any comments on the plan and make sure that we were able to have input in what goes forward. Any questions or comments from Board members, members of the public?
And the plan was developed by the Nutrition Collaborative for the county so that the, the activities are focused to what the community feels is beneficial to them.
Okay, so, with that, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero with Supervisor Cox not voting because he's not in attendance. We will now move on to our untimed portion of our agenda, item number 16, which is a request from Information and Communications Technology to approve position allocation changes. Peg?
Item 18.
18, I apologize. And a nice pink shirt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CIO and Counselor. On an annual basis, we review our current structure while considering upcoming changes in our industry. In our review, we found adjustments needed to allow for better positioning of, for operation in the future. These changes provide career and salary growth for our employees, and the collapse of the classifications prepare us for the future workload needs. Additionally, we reviewed radio and communications in comparison to surrounding counties. This had not been done in over 10 years. What we're proposing are changes that will bring our employees closer to the neighboring communities. We have engaged in meet and confer, and action today would be subject to completion of meet and confer.
Okay, any questions from Board members? Members of the public, any questions? Okay, seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, or a motion by Supervisor Ashida, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero with Supervisor Cox not voting because he's not present. We will now move on to our untimed item addendum. Actually, it's so nice to see so many of you come to listen to me talk this morning, especially from the Sheriff's Department, but I have a feeling this is the item that you are here for. We will now look over to Gene, who is going to present this item. This is a request from Human Resources Development to appoint Under Sheriff Mike Boudreau as Acting Sheriff effective October 6, 2013.
Thank you, Chairman. Gene Rousseau, CIO, and I'm bringing this item forward on a very short timeline. The county has followed a standard practice of appointing assistants to fill department director positions on an interim basis until the director is appointed. We recently did this in our Human Resources Department with Rhonda and gave her a 5% bump during the interim period. The issue we have before us is similar, but certainly unique. As everyone is aware, the sheriff recently announced he has a medical condition that for now prevents him from performing the functions and duties of his position. This is not easy for me to bring forward since the sheriff and I have developed a good friendship over the years, and I wish him a fast recovery. In the meantime, the item before you appoints Mike Boudreau as Acting Sheriff and provides for an additional 5% pay increase for his performance of additional duties. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Any questions from Board members? Any questions from members of the public? Okay, seeing none. Really exciting to see the tremendous outpouring of support from the Sheriff's Department for this decision. I know this has been a difficult time, seeing Sheriff Whitman's medical condition, and I know it came as unexpected to all of us, but really great to see such a tremendous outpouring of support for not only the sheriff and his philosophy, but for Under Sheriff Mike Boudreau, who will be taking over on an interim basis and acting as sheriff for the time being. So, we really appreciate all of you from the Sheriff's Department for all that you do, first of all, but for coming today to support the decision that the Board will be making. With that, the Chair will entertain further comments or a motion.
I should have a comment. I think Sheriff Bill put Mike in that position because of all the confidence he had in him, and I believe the same way. So, I mean, here's, here's a man that's worked himself up through the department, very capable, he's a very educated man, and very proud to see you in this position.
Motion.
And I would motion for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Ashida. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero, with Supervisor Cox not voting because he is not present at today's meeting. With that, that concludes, actually, Mike, with, with the vote being unanimous and you now being Acting Sheriff, if you would like to come forward and make a few comments, that would be appreciated. Nothing like speaking off the cuff, huh?
Well, good morning, members of the Board. Thank you very much for your confidence, and thank you for the vote. First and foremost, I'd like to reiterate what Gene has expressed. Bill Whitman is truly a friend of mine and a friend of all yours, I know. And he carries on truly a tradition in this department, has carried this department when we didn't even have proper safety equipment 20 years ago into a department of today that is top-notch in the state of California. And we have other agencies that reach out to us, asking questions on how we've advanced and what we have done and moved forward. And I promise you that I'll carry on that torch of Sheriff Whitman. He truly is a friend of mine, and most importantly, I would like to express that his health is the most important thing, and we're expecting a speedy recovery, and we hope that in the near future that he can come back into the seat that you've sat me in today. I would like to recognize the men and women of the department. I was, it's kind of overcome this morning. I had no idea that there was going to be such an outpouring in the hallways of the Sheriff's Department this morning, and it was such an excitement, and I just have to really express my gratitude. Every one of them back there are friends of mine, and I just was overcome by having them there this morning. So, so with that, I guarantee you that Sheriff Whitman has put the cogs in place that, for situations just like this, that the, the machine keep moving, and we're still providing protection and safety to the communities of Tulare County. We're still out there doing what we do as law enforcement, and I promise you that we'll continue that. And please feel free to call me at any time you have, you know exactly how to get ahold of me, and, and we'll address any issues that arise. But again, thank you for the time to the men and women. Thank you, and thank you to the Board.
You're welcome. And you know what? I know we all feel really safe today, thanks to all of you for being here, and I hope the rest of the public feels real safe right now outside these walls, too. So, we appreciate all you do, and I wish you the best of luck and look forward to working with you. Thank you very much. And that. And with that, that ends our regularly scheduled and open portion of our meeting. Counsel, do we have need for closed session this morning?
We do, Mr. Chairman. You have items A through D on your Board's closed session agenda and addenda agenda. Item A is off agenda, do not, oh, hang on, let's see, there will be an announcement.
Okay, thank you for attending today's meeting and good luck.
You might announce if there'll be no meeting next week.
Oh, and by the way, there will be no board meeting next week. I know it is scheduled, but due to a, a lack of an agenda, we did bring it on to today's meeting. So, thank you all for attending.
My cookies are gone, so I'm taking these with me. Report out today, October 8, 2013, Tuesday, by Kathleen Valzland County Counsel, in the matter of item C on the Board's closed session agenda noted as per charge SA-CE-844-M. The Board authorized provision of a defense in that action on motion of Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Ashida. On a four to zero vote, Supervisor Cox being absent. There are no other announcements.